Good morning, we will call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of Wednesday, November twelfth, twenty twenty-five to order. I'll let the record show, we are absent one Commissioner, Commissioner Schwab. Our first item this morning will be our opening ceremonies pledge of allegiance. All right, our first item this morning is our order of business. Is there any changes or corrections to the order of business, Mr. Slatchek?
Morning, Mr. Chairman, there are no changes to the order of business.
Hearing no changes, Commissioners, I'd look for a motion to approve the order of business.
We'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion carries. Uh, next item this morning is our minutes of the October eighth, twenty twenty-five session. Uh, did you see any corrections or additions to those minutes, Commissioners?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the minutes as presented, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion carries. We'll move into our regular agenda items this morning, this is a rezoning request, R E Z dash zero zero seven dash twenty twenty-five. This is to consider a zoning map amendment from low density residential R one to medium density residential R two for the lots thirty-two through thirty-six of block one of Hart River, fourth addition subdivision, located in the southeast quarter of the southeast quarter of section nine, township one thirty-nine north, range ninety-six west in the city of Dickinson. The site consists of approximately one point one three acres. Good morning, Ms. Burchak.
Morning Commissioners, Natalie Burchak, City Planner. So, the applicant is requesting approval of a zoning map amendment from low density residential or R one to medium density residential or R two for lots thirty-two through thirty-six of block one of the Hart River fourth subdivision located within the city of Dickinson. So, the purpose of this rezoning is to allow for the construction of three four-unit multifamily residential buildings, which would also require a future replat of the property in order to replat all into uh three sixteen thousand square foot lots. Uh, this project was previously heard at the October Planning and Zoning Commission meeting where it was tabled for further discussion and to hold a public engagement meeting. Uh, that public engagement meeting was held on October twenty-ninth from four to six P M. Uh, public comments, there have been quite a few for this project. Uh, majority of the residents nearby have stated that they do not want to see this rezoned, they want to see it either built as single-family homes or just left vacant. Um, the rezoning and replating of this project would also bring a development agreement with the developer in order to construct the uh second avenue southwest up to the end of the lot line, which you can see on the map there. There was also a petition that was sent to us this morning for about seventy-seven signatures of the residents nearby that are all opposed to this project. But I'm here to answer any questions that you guys might have, the applicant is also here to answer any questions and uh staff would recommend approval of this rezoning request.
All right, thank you, Ms. Burchak, any questions for staff regarding this?
I have a question on the transmittal letter, it says building four units, it's three units instead of four, has that been changed?
Yeah, so there was further discussion with the applicant, so only three of those four plexes will be constructed.
Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Burchak, did the applicant have anything they'd like to say this morning?
Are you asking anybody what I'm saying?
We'll open the public hearing here in a few minutes.
Pardon?
Uh, th- this is just for the applicant, if they want to make any comments.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment.
It'll be in a couple of minutes for the public hearing.
We do have um four plexes adjoining that property going down Seventh Street Southwest, so we just want to um build some more. Cause there, we own um, I think there's seven or eight buildings going down Seventh already existing.
That would be in the highlighted yellow area, I'm assuming, correct, Ms. Burchak?
Yeah, so R two is gonna be just to the west and all of that yellow area.
Okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Win, any other questions? All right, seeing none, we will open the public hearing regarding this rezoning request. Anybody in the public have any comments or concerns regarding this rezon request, you can come forward or you can call into seven oh one four five six seven zero zero six. Good morning, just state your name, please, for the record.
Larry Iverson, and I live at the corner of Main and then Seventh, down south. And if this here is approved, I'd like to see if uh city could make some contingencies to the, to the approval. Is that, you know, it's mostly common sense that anything like this happens in an area, the property taxes are, I mean, the uh value of houses go down. So, I was wondering if uh, if it is approved, if it could be something in the contingency to say that the person that's making the profits off of this would probably give uh the value that has been decreased by homes in the area give that amount to the homeowners to say that, okay, your value is released, reduced as much, so they should pay the owners of those residents how much that is reduced by, which would be figured out and comput- computed by some third party to give a value decrease. And also that the city would probably reduce the taxes for those houses in that area because there would be a reduction of value. So, the assessed value would be lowered, so we didn't have to pay as many taxes. So, that'd be a couple of things that I would say that really makes a difference, and everybody knows it's common sense that anything like this that moves into a residential area reduces the value and, and uh I'd like to make some suggestions for compensation for those people that live there, which would include me, so I'd just say that on there.
So, you have a, you feel that the vacant lots are more infl- help your value than having new construction, buildings built by, and the lots developed? I'm, I'm, I'm a little confused.
Yeah.
I mean, somebody's gonna spend a few million dollars developing this area, or it can save vacant lots, and you're saying by the, the few million dollars in the street going in, that's gonna hurt your property value. I, I, I'd like, I'd like a little more explanation on that, I, cause I, I've been doing this for twenty-seven years as a contractor, I, I've never seen an area get developed and the property values go down.
Well, I would uh say I'm different with you on that feeling because any realtor would tell you that in an area of residential areas, you put in a high-density uh occupancy buildings, like an apartment place, the value is gonna go down, people aren't gonna wanna buy by that because the, the increased traffic, this will be a, a great impact on Seven Thousand down there, tremendous impact. All the people living along there and the people who, just think of this here, that if you were living at a residence there and you had put a high-density right next to you, just think of the impact that those people would have in their backyards with all the commotion, the traffic, the increased volumes from all the stuff around, that's a disturbance to the people. It's also proven that it's been a decrease in value to homeowners around the areas whenever there's a high-density put into that area. So, I think that if it is approved, I think there should be some contingencies and stuff for the person that's moving that high-density in there and the profits that they get should be probably dis- distributed to value reduction to the property. And we could go have any realtors probably figure that out and give a computation for all the houses in the area. It would probably be high right where the house is, where the apartment is, but as you move out, it would probably be lesser as far as the reduction of value, but right close to those places, the reduction of value or resales or anything like that would be reduced and and we couldn't, we couldn't say that wouldn't be, cause it's really shown that.
And you don't think the, those quonset buildings that have been there for years have any effect on the value of these people's houses?
Well, they've been there, they started back there, but why should we increase more of that stuff? Because if those things were there, there's probably a lot of people that were buying houses, well, I don't wanna live here, so I'm gonna look for someplace else to build a house or buy a house. So, there, there is a value reduction that we have to observe and know what's there. And then, is there gonna be any um, to the residents in the area, would there be any like assessments for the improvements? Would anybody get any assessments for property um, like streets, sidewalks, all that stuff?
No, the applicant has already just said they are paying one hundred percent of the cost of development out of their pocket, so there would be no assessment
Okay.
to the adjoining property owners.
Okay. But there will be a high impact on traffic in that area, we all would have to acknowledge that, so, thank you for listening to me.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Iverson. Anyone else in the public would like to make any comments regarding this application?
Morning. Good morning, uh, my name is Mary Adzaro, and I've lived in the area since nineteen ninety. We went through this in two thousand ten, as far as a rezoning was concerned. I did bring copies of it, cause apparently the city didn't know anything about it. We had a hundred and thirteen signatures against it at that point. This time, I did go around the neighborhood, talked to a lot of people, we had a lot of concerns. We do have a lot of confusion down there, and I know none of you live in our area, which is unfortunate, cause then you would know what we're talking about. Uh, you think that quonsets um impact our housing value. Quonsets are wonderful neighbors. They don't make any noise, you don't have any traffic back and forth, very, very little. They make wonderful neighbors. Don't ever think that a quonset behind you is a bother. Um, one thing I would like to address is if you're gonna put up a two-level apartment building, what's that gonna do to the houses that are directly behind it? As far as the lighting is concerned, as far as privacy is concerned, has anybody ever considered that? Probably not. The increased traffic flow on Seventh Street is gonna be quite a bit. It's gonna be harder to sell my personal residence with an apartment house right behind it. Somebody had brought up at the development meeting that uh on Fairway, there was a bunch of um R twos built there that never impacted the neighborhood. That's because it's Fairway on one side, on the north side, and it's Eighth Street on the south side, and states with commercial properties. It's not fully encased by residential homes. Another impact is the environmental. I have deer that come in my neighborhood, I have pheasants, I have turkeys. Believe it or not, we have all of that going on down there because that lot behind us is empty and allows, allows the wildlife to come in. I just really feel that you need to listen to the citizens that live down there because we do not want this. We would be more than happy to have it developed in an R one manner, and we would be most happy for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adzaro. Anyone else in the public have any comments or concerns?
Good morning.
Morning, Dylan Chalk, I live right next to the adjacent property that uh this is planning on being rezoned. I just, I just ask all you guys to think about, you know, um, the your, the your backyard factor. If this was your backyard, would you want more apartment complexes? It's just, it's just that simple, we already have a bunch of them, we don't need anymore. Citywide, most of the time, there's plenty of vacancies, we don't need, there isn't a demand for more properties like this in Dickinson. There just isn't. We got rumors of layoffs coming in a big industry, the oil industry, it's not the only industry in this town, but it is a big chunk of what goes on here. There's a lot of talk of layoffs and consolidations in the next, in next year or two. That's gonna also affect the demand for these kind of properties, it's probably gonna be less everything we're hearing. I don't see what the benefit and what the need is to put this right next to more residential properties. There isn't anybody in the neighborhood that really wants it, there isn't anybody in the neighborhood that feels they're gonna benefit. Uh, they're just, it, it just makes common sense not to put it there, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Dan Zubki. I own one of the quonsets there, and I guess the concern that I've had from the beginning is the access that will, at this point, be shut off uh, from the north side. I'm not sure how those uh apartment buildings or whatever would be set, originally there was four, and they were gonna change a property line. I don't know where those buildings are going to be set, access from the north is shut off. When I purchased mine years ago, part of the agreement was a verbal agreement that access would be available to the west side of those quonsets, so you could get to and from them. And at this point, I'm kind of in the middle, and if anyone would shut it off from the north, which this rezoning appears to be going to do, the only access is from the south. If one of the owners from the south of me would decide to completely shut off or sell in the same manner that is happening here, I would have no access to my building. In the last year, the taxes were increased by the city two hundred and thirty percent on that property. I mean, it's nice in one aspect, I suppose if I could sell it, then the value of the property, of course, is more. But if I have no access to it, what's the value going to be of that property? And so, at this point, I haven't heard anything about uh fixing any kind of access to the north side of those quonsets at all. I see the, the rezoning taking place, simply shutting off everything from the north. And another issue that I think is going to happen in the area, I don't know about landowners there, but I know the quonset area, there's a fair amount of traffic that goes through there, uh, especially from wind construction workers living in some of those apartments. Travels back and forth there at least twice a day. I was just over by mine the other day and cleaning up garbage and saw on that is around there. Uh, people walk their dog around there and just think that uh it's a wide-open area that does not have to be cleaned up in any manner. So, that's interesting, sometimes when you're mowing, what are you stepping in? So, uh, just have concern for access and the uh property owners that are to the south there. Who, how much we are going to be affected?
Who would've get, who would've given you access over somebody that, was it the previous owners of these lots?
Yes, yes.
But nothing in writing?
No. No.
I mean, you, you'll still have access along Second Avenue Southwest, cause that'll be a new street, but...
Not, you can't get uh, if you tried to drive down that Second Avenue, okay, now how are you going to get to the west side of those quonsets?
How do you get to the west side of those quonsets if you're not driving on a private person's lot that probably could tell you not to?
Uh, we could not, but as I said, when we purchased those, that was a verbal agreement that that would not be shut off. Now, that's a long time ago, and like, like has been said, it is not written. But it has always been, and lots of public travels through on, on the west side of those even now. So, it isn't just the owners of the property, there's lots of others that travel either on the west side or the east side, there's traffic going on both of them at this point.
Thank you for, any further questions for Mr. Zubki? Thank you. Anyone else in the public have any comments or concerns? One more time, while the public hearing is open, anybody else in the public have any comments or concerns? Seeing and hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Commissioners, any questions for staff or the applicant?
You said you had another su- our petition this morning with seventy-seven signatures, is that correct?
Yeah, it was received kind of five minutes before this meeting, so I can definitely mail it out afterwards, but I didn't quite have time to distribute it.
To clarify, so Second A- Second? To clarify, Second Avenue is gonna go all the way from north to south, from Eighth to Seventh, is that correct?
No, it only is gonna get constructed out to the end of the property line.
Yeah.
So, where you see at the end of the five lots that are being proposed to be rezoned, at the south end of that fifth lot will be where the road is constructed to.
The quonsets are built in the street right away?
Yeah, it can't be constructed further south without the...
Unless the quonsets would go away, there, we can't, on the street can't go any farther, as you can see by the map there.
And then, uh, Ms. Adzaro did provide some physical copies of the petition, which I can distribute to you guys right now, if that's what you want.
Sure, if you wanna.
I also have copies of the two thousand ten petition that went out, being that the city did not look into that.
So, would, would the quonsets be accessed by Second as well, from the north?
So, that access point would still stay open, but it uh would just be access to the east side. So, essentially, it would kind of dead-end into an access that would provide for the quonsets, but it wouldn't go towards the west. It would stay in that right of way.
And it still could.
Well, right now, they're accessing these quonsets, from my understanding, from the west side, which is the private lot that that lot owner could turn off any day.
Yeah, so the way that it was platted, that west side, which is the primary access road, is going through private property.
So, if the builder, the owner would keep us, if we would keep this R one and they would build resident- residential homes, the north side's gonna be cut off no matter what?
Correct.
Yes.
Mr. Zubki, if you have another comment, you can come up.
The thing about that R one, if that were the case, then there would be a possibility probably for quonset owners to purchase, say, a piece of that southern end of the lots that are being considered for R two, just a piece of it, rather than the whole property, to have a road or something there.
There's probably still that option, have you spoken to Mr. Win about that?
I have not, but there has been no presentation that there would be any possibility of that either, and even at this point, I don't know that anybody knows other than the Winds where those buildings would be placed on those lots. I don't see anything on this, this graphic showing where the buildings would be placed, uh, if there's garages.
There's, yeah, there's three fil- the, I've seen at the public engagement meeting, they had a, a preliminary layout, there was three buildings, they face east. The garages would face east onto the Second.
On which lots?
All of them.
So, they would be replatted into three lots?
Oh.
Basically, that whole block would be split?
Yeah, there'd be, there are three equal-sized lots that'd be replatted into. And the fit, front of them would face east with the garages facing east onto Second.
So, there, there would be possibility then of maybe, I mean, it seems to me like when some of this was done, that Second Avenue should have been jogged and gone on the west side of those properties, and then the east side could have been traded with uh, with the city or whatever to take away any of this kind of issue, and there would have been access to the west side, uh, apartments could have been facing west or whatever, but...
The more concern, I, I mean, maybe all you quonset owners get along, but right now, you're crossing other quonset owners' properties to get to yours, or if you're in the middle, I mean, uh...
Everybody's crossing.
I, I, I'm trying to read the number, if it's seven something, but if seven something right there that adjoins this lot would say, I don't want nobody driving on my lot, then...
Yeah.
Then what happens?
Uh, but as you said, everyone has gotten along up to this point, yes, without any issue whatsoever. Cause people go in front of mine, coming from the south or the north, to get to those quonsets, and same thing uh for me. So, yes, that has been uh amenable with everyone at this point, has been no issue whatsoever. The other thing that has happened there, and if you increase uh population there, I don't know if it'll increase or not, but there has been uh vandalism, I have dealt with attempted break-ins and that sort of thing in that area too. I don't know, like I said, if that will increase with uh more traffic going across those properties, because I'm assuming that that traffic will continue as it is now, uh, and just increase.
And I can't tell from this aerial, but I mean, can you drive between those quonsets?
There's twenty feet from wall to wall. And so, accessing from the east side with a camper or fifth wheel or anything like that would be near impossible without driving on people backyards on the, on the east side, which none of us have ever done.
Yeah.
So, that would become, um, you could come off a second, but you just can't do that in twenty feet, I don't think, when you don't have any space to the east because of where the, those quonsets are set.
You just can't make this, you can't swing it around or whatever.
You can't, can't make that corner. If you could once make that corner and get to the west side of them, then you still have all the room that you once had. And there again, you're still, in order to do that sort of thing, which everyone does over there, uh, you have to go on to the neighbor's property most of the time in order to place anything into the building. And so, that's, it's just been that agreement from the very beginning.
But, the question I have, e- even if they scrap this whole thing and leave it R one and decide to build, replat this and let's say they build five houses there, we're in the same boat, are we not?
Possibly, possibly.
I mean, if, if you can work out a deal with them leaving it R one with Winds, I imagine you could work out a deal with leaving it with R two with Winds.
Possibly.
I mean, because really what's happening now, the access is not a legal access, so.
In regards to this, is there any way that there can be an easement granted for access from the potential new owner? In regards to accessing that, from that, coming in where they're going to stop their development of the road, and then accessing still around that area?
I don't think it's something that we as a commission want to force on them, because they're gonna have to negotiate the details of the easement if that happens. Like, who's gonna maintain it?
Understandable.
I mean, who's gonna pay for it, is it gonna be paved, is it gonna?
Couple things, uh, so when we met earlier, excuse me, when we met earlier in July for a pre-application meeting, one of the property owners to the south of one of the Quonsets met, uh, with Ms. Nguyen, and ultimately, this was part of that discussion, was that access, you're crossing properties illegally right now, you're trespassing. And so, there is access from the south off of Eighth Street, and the recommendation at that time was create some kind of an ingress egress easement across those properties to ensure that this access doesn't get cut off. And the other thing is, don't do anything to those Quonsets, otherwise, they're legally non-conforming, and they will be required to be removed if in fact you do anything to them. So that was the advisement at that time in our pre-application letter.
Yeah, I think we had that discussion before, if, if these were destroyed, let's say by fire, or wind, or hail, or whatever, they would not be allowed to be rebuilt there.
No, they would not.
That's correct, yeah, that's what I thought.
And in particular, properties would not be allowed to encroach, encroach on the right of way as they currently are. They'd have to meet setback requirements and everything else, and they'd be moved away from where they're currently located.
Ms. Burchak, do you know the property directly to the, uh, west that is zoned R2 currently? Was that, uh, an amended change? Do we know when that was changed? Was that previously R1 that was changed to R2, and when did that happen?
Based on our records, it's been there for years, I think those were built in the eighties, so it would've been in that same zoning district since then. It would've at least been that way since nineteen ninety-nine when this code was adopted.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments or concerns? Or questions for staff or applicants?
Morning. I'm Kevin Prowse, I live across the street there from the project, and, um, we're asking if you guys could keep it R1. We like it R1 the way it's been, we got no problem with housing coming in there. Uh, another concern would be down the road, if these apartments are built, um, what's gonna happen in ten or twenty years from now? Wind ain't gonna be there forever, they're gonna sell out, and then, then we gotta look at apartments for the rest of our lives over there too. What's gonna happen ten, twenty years down the road? I'd, I'd say, if you want, put housing development in there, and you can turn around and sell housing a lot easier than you can apartments, and you can manage housing easier than apartments.
Alright, any other comment? Any questions for Mr. Prowse? Thank you for your comments. And just, just were clarified, I mean, this fits within how we would normally zone, correct?
Yeah, so since there's already R2 in the area to the west, this would not be considered spot zoning, so this would kind of match that.
So it does fit our subdivision requirements?
Provided that that gets rezoned in the future, which would be required in order to get any kind of building permit, yeah, that would meet the requirements. Like, as is, they could be R2 lots, they're over seven thousand square feet, and then, as they've been proposed to be replat to sixteen thousand, that would be what would allow those, uh, fourplexes.
Any other questions for staff?
Was there any further, I guess, agreement or, um, for access to those, uh, properties to the east, along that, for rear access?
Uh, so, that was a point brought up to the applicant to discuss with those property owners, for where they would want any kind of access or driveway approach to be installed, if they're still looking for access to the backyard.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, Commissioners, what are your wishes?
I'd just like to make a couple comments, I guess, again, I, thinking back to last meeting, and I know this is something we haven't talked about, so there was a a couple concerns from, from the residents in the area, one was, you know, this is R1, R2 doesn't fit in the area, which I guess I kind of disagree with, with all these R2 buildings on Seventh Street, it, it kind of does fit in the area. I know another concern was, um, you know, XX traffic, when at that time, we were talking four, fourplexes, now we're down to three. I think that helps minimize a little bit of that, obviously, that's still an increase. I know Val took the time and emailed just for everyone to know, because we heard that there was a lot of complaints from the residents that the police are being called, and that there's a lot of traffic violations on Seventh. So, we did get details regarding traffic accidents citations on Seventh Street, which are, in my opinion, very, very minimal in the last two years. From, I think they have seven traffic stops from twenty twenty-four all the way to when this report was pulled. I mean, so we're talking over a year and a half, and only seven stops on Seventh Street, which I guess maybe, maybe that's a lot, I, I don't know. But it seemed minimal to me, um, so I just wanted to make those comments, I feel like this does fit the area. I think this main issue of access to the Quonsets is gonna be an issue no matter what is built there. I don't think that's ever gonna go away, if it's R1, I mean, if there's a deal that can be made with some sort of easement on the west side, I, I think that would be appropriate. But that private owner could turn that access off anytime he wants. So, I, I think that's gonna continue to be an issue regardless of what is done with this rezoning.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Johansson, anybody else have any comments? Alright, hearing none, I would look for a motion to either approve or deny the rezone change.
I think I'm gonna make a motion, I'm gonna move the City of Dickinson Planning Zoning Commission recommend approval of REZ dash zero zero seven dash two zero two five. The Wind Heart River four-three zoning request as being consistent with the City of Dickinson Comprehensive Plan, as being compliant with the City of Dickinson zoning ordinance, and as being in the interest of the public health, safety, and welfare.
I will second.
A little motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
That motion carries. Alright, we will move on to the next item this morning, public issues of concern, not on the agenda, if there's any public issues of concern that were not addressed on the agenda, that they'd like to be discussed, you can come forward now, or call into seven oh one four five six seven zero zero six. Anyone in the public have anything that was not on our agenda this morning? Alright, seeing none, we will close the public hearing, or close that item on our agenda. Commissioners, item five, is there anything that you would like to bring up that was not on our agenda this morning? Hearing none, we will move on to item six, we had a work session scheduled this morning, industrial off-street parking standards presentation, Ms. Burchak.
Morning Commissioners, Natalie Burchak, City Planner. So today, I am giving a short presentation about the industrial off-street parking standards within the City of Dickinson. Uh, this is concerning just some of the permitted, kind of finished, uh, pavements that are allowed through our municipal code for industrial lots. So some of the questions that were going to be addressed in this presentation, what are the current regulations around off-street parking in traffic circulation areas within our municipal code? What impacts can permitting unpaved traffic circulation areas have on the surrounding properties? And then, how do other cities and communities handle these issues throughout the state? So, for our municipal code, I know it's a little bit, uh, tough to read here, but, uh, the main concern is for item B, item three, or, uh, sorry, item C, item three, is, uh, any parking? I'm confusing myself again. Sorry, item B, item four. Uh, in the LI or GI districts only, rear yard vehicle circulation areas not including parking spaces may be crushed concrete or similar material as approved by the city administrator or designee. So this item allows for in the industrial zoning districts, for any circulation areas that are not considered actual parking spaces, to utilize things like crushed concrete or scoria as their, uh, finished, uh, material. So they don't have to do any kind of paving or any kind of, uh, all-weather finish on those materials. Typically, what this ends up bringing is a lot of, uh, if there's any high winds, you get a lot of dust generated that blows into the adjacent streets, into any of the right-of-way, and into adjacent lots. This has been a concern throughout the city, particularly along Velard, you've got those industrial areas that, uh, have scoria as their finish that kind of blows into the, uh, right-of-way when you're driving along it. And then on the east side of town as well, there have been some complaints lodged by residents for adjacent industrial zones that have scoria as their finish, that blows into the properties. So what do other communities do to address this? So Bismarck's current requirements, you can see that their surfacing does not allow for crushed rock, crushed asphalt, crushed concrete, or gravel. Those are not considered acceptable surfacing materials. So, any kind of off-street parking and loading and circulation areas have to be paved with hard surface materials like concrete, asphalt, anything like that. So Watford City, all required off-street parking spaces consist of improved all-weather surfacing with a minimum of two inches, compacted asphalt concrete over ninety-five percent compact base, or double-layer chip sealed using an approved, approved dust palliative. So this is a little bit less restrictive, you can still use things like crushed concrete or, uh, crushed asphalt as a finish, as long as it has some kind of, uh, chip seal or dust palliative utilized to prevent any kind of, uh, wind or heavy traffic erosion that blows it into the right-of-way. So Williston is probably one of the least restrictive. So, uh, driveways that are accessing property from paved streets or alleys must be paved with a hard surface from street surface, uh, to the property. But any, uh, lots that are not accessed via any kind of paved alleyway or street do not require to be, uh, paved. So those can be utilizing crushed concrete, scoria, dirt, anything like that, that just matches whatever alleyway they're utilizing to access the property. And this is only for the, uh, industrial districts, there are M1, M2, M3, and HCC. Grand Forks, uh, has very similar requirements to Bismarck, they don't typically allow for any kind of, uh, crushed concrete, scoria, any materials like that. However, they also have a, uh, or, my mistake, they do allow for that, but they have a requirement for, uh, at least a fifty-foot paved entrance to any kind of right-of-way. So on private property, you have to have a fifty-foot paved stretch of road that kind of serves as a way to get to any kind of gravel or sediment that can be packed onto any of these truck tires, it has a chance to kind of wear off of the truck on this, uh, little paved stretch. So some of the findings from looking into these other communities, the city currently does allow for crushed concrete, scoria, and similar materials to be utilized in the LI and GI zoning districts, provided they are only used in rear yard vehicle circulation areas. So the use of crushed concrete or scoria can lead to maintenance issues, as loose aggregate can be tracked onto public streets, and high winds can lead to dust that gets blown onto adjacent streets and properties. Based on some preliminary estimates, there are roughly fifty-two properties that utilize some form of unfinished scoria within city limits. And a majority of other North Dakota communities do not allow industrial developments to consider anything other than pavement of finished surface. And if they do, they have some extra requirements such as that, uh, chip sealing, or the fifty-foot, uh, pavement stretch. So some of the suggestions that the city is proposing is to add a requirement akin to Watford City that requires all-weather surfacing or chip sealing within city limits. So this would eliminate scoria and other materials that generate significant dust as an option to be utilized for any properties moving forward. This would only apply to within city limits, so anything in the extraterritorial zone would not be, uh, would not have to abide by the same requirements. It would be allowed to continue using scoria. So, there would be a requirement akin to Grand Forks that requires a fifty-foot paved drive aisle to catch any loose gravel or dust prior to reaching public right-of-way, instead of having approaches that go right onto any kind of dirt or scoria base. And then, we could look into the feasibility of requiring property owners that do not meet this requirement must be brought into compliance within two years of the ordinance being approved. This would be more of a question of whether the city would want to pick those battles with those, with those property owners. As mentioned, there are roughly fifty-two within city limits as of now, that have, uh, scoria and would not meet these kinds of requirements. But with that, I'm open to any comments or questions that you guys may have, as well as any, uh, direction for what you guys would like to see for any kind of ordinance moving forward.
So how many complaints have we had?
There's been one particularly, uh, kind of recurring complaint, but particularly for Velard or for, uh, the east side, there have been a couple. I don't have an exact number, I don't know, Josh, if you have anything more specific?
I don't have an exact number of complaints, um, there's, probably the most frequent is off of Fourth Avenue East on the north side of town, and then, kind of the, the west Velard area, uh, the amount of dust generation and, and whatnot, so those are the most frequent calls.
West Velard?
Uh, West Velard being, uh,
Where at exactly?
Basically like Dickinson ready mix, I mean, so, that, that dust generation from that area, that's been, that, that's been brought up, uh, a handful of different times.
Don't even get me started on that one. So, that was supposed to be paved before they got final seal on three of the buildings they've built since they've been there, so we didn't do our job on that, that's nobody else's fault but ours.
Yeah, and that's something that we do plan to work with them on, um, this winter, as far as looking at, there's some unique right-of-way attributes and whatnot, so.
Yeah, I'm, we've had plenty of opportunity to make them pave that street going in there, and we haven't done our job on that, so. We got one recurring complaint, that really makes it hard for me to see why this is even necessary to dig into again.
I think in general, um, although the complaint volume may not be that high, I think the, the concern on dust generation in general, and, and in particular, the use of scoria, that'd be probably my biggest concern as a finished product, um, that's why we just figured we'd bring it up and, and see kind of what the wishes and desires are from the planning.
I'm not opposed to the ban of scoria, but, I mean, crushed concrete and crushed asphalt is fairly dustless, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, the, the, um, even in this case, I'm not necessarily even thinking that scoria as a, as a product should be banned, I think making sure that it's, it's topped with something so that the, the degradation of the material isn't so significant as well as it's not that surface material that becomes a fine clay type powder that then gets, uh, blown easily in the wind, so.
Or tracks red all over the place.
Yep.
I'm, I, I, I'm okay with that, or, and then, you know, for tracking, I mean, I, I thought we had something already in place for, you know, a paved approach coming off of. we had something already in place for, you know, a paved approach coming off a paved road before they could do a, any kind of gravel surface, but.
Unfortunately, digging through our, our municipal code, there isn't nothing that, that we're aware of that, as we looked into this and whatnot. And so I think, I think this would be something, I think of, of value, in particular, some of the changes that are recently adopted for our municipal code for oil and gas well development or other energy-related developments, requiring that, and especially if it were in our municipal code, we could refer back to and then provide that recommendation to the Department of Mineral Resources, and then ultimately making its way to the North Dakota Industrial Commission, that any new wells that would be permitted within the city of Williston, or city of Dickinson, would have to be ultimately paved, that 50 feet out, or whatever that distance is from our right-of-way limit, so.
Okay. Cause I don't think there's any appetite here to go after the 52 people that have this and make them comply with some new ordinance. I think that'd be pretty tough.
Yes, especially a retroactive would always be difficult. I would see that as being a very challenging attribute, but, but yeah, the. On a go-forward basis, any of those yard or storage type, type spaces in industrial areas, that, that would be something, I guess, of, of value, I would say, is of value.
I, I don't, I think it's hard for us to go all the way to the point of, we're gonna require pavement or concrete. I mean, I mean, you got some of these yards, industrial yards are acres. I mean, you'd be talking millions of dollars in improvements. I'm not, I'm not opposed to a 40 or 50-foot required paved approach coming in off of a, one of our streets before they, they could start the asphalt. So that, that should eliminate a lot of the tracking coming out of there, you know?
Yeah, and then, I guess, as an example, I mean, we just completed the north industries area with crushed concrete, recycled asphalt, a blend of that. Although there's a minimal amount of dust, if you drive that area and stuff, especially after it's, you know, been a while since any kind of rain event, you'll see a little bit of dust, but it's nowhere near what it used to be where it was just a gravel surface, so.
Yeah. So I think we can come back with some suggestions on that. I mean, like I said, scoria is not something I think should be used for a road base or base anyway. It's just, that's just my opinion. Just because of the red dye clay, you know, the, drags that red dye all over the place. But crushed asphalt and crushed concrete, I don't see as being, like I said, they're very limited in what they put off for dust, if, if they're done right. And you can always apply a top coat to that, too, so.
The only other attribute, Public Works Director Prowse and I had conversations on, was specifically the dust control or dust suppression methods that are oftentimes used in the county such as magnesium chloride or calcium chloride. Those are actually things we would strongly recommend that we not utilize in city limits, because that ultimately, that becomes kind of a sticky type product, and it drags out onto the pavement and some of those kind of things. Whereas, you know, if you're using that in a rural setting, that's just a, it, it's just a different application, different use, different circumstance.
Agreed. All right. Any other questions for staff or comments regarding this? All right. So I think, yeah, if you guys want to put some options together, maybe some ordinance changes and what we can, I think we would take a look at those at the next meeting or whenever, so.
Sounds good. Yeah, we can prepare something either for December or January.
Sounds good to me. All right. Anyone else have anything? If not, I'd look for a motion to adjourn. Do you have a second?
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you.